Good evening and welcome to the City of Montgomery City Council meeting. We are here to discuss business this evening. If you would like, I'd like for you to please turn your phones off to vibrate or turn off the speakers so that we are not interrupted. And let's call this meeting to order. It is exactly 6:04 PM. I understand that we're not live streamed. This will be up on YouTube tomorrow, correct? Okay, yes ma'am, thank you. With that, I'd like to note that we have a quorum. We are missing Kevin Lacy. And we'll begin this evening with an invocation from Byron Sanford.
Lord, we thank you so much for all the blessings that we're able to see every day. Help us to be of a mindset to seek peace, to be ambassadors in this world for you, to love ridiculously like you do, and Lord, to seek your wisdom and guidance now as we go into policymaking. May you be with us and guide and direct us in all that we speak and do. May it bring glory to you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, United States Fly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag?
Aye, the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One state under God, one indivisible. First time on business on our agenda is the Visitor and Citizens Forum. I'll be calling you up in the order of which I receive. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. And I will begin the timer. First up is Afra Lucas with Bill Clevinger on deck.
Good evening. I requested a-
Okay, Afra, would you could just state your full name and your address? Apologize, we have to have that for the record.
I need to get stopped by who will ask me for my full address. I live in City Limits, Montgomery.
But we had to have that for the record?
I wrote it, I'm in there.
So the five, it is five oh one Louisa?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So I am here because I have few things that are really concerned about our business. On October 5th, Mr. Woodcutson, I wanted to say thank you because you were the only one that was interested to bring our business back that night. Appreciate it. The water was shut down that day, ain't nobody even informed us at all, running a business full, full of customers, not even an apology from no one. The decision that you take sometimes, we are not informed either about what event is going to happen in downtown. We are not informed of what parade is going to happen in downtown, either can affect our business positive or negative. But you guys don't care. Obviously, you don't care because you work for the government and the government gets paid doesn't matter what. But we had to work even harder when those things happened and we are not informed at all. You say, for example, that you hear about downtown Montgomery. Over the street, McHarver, he's like an old t-shirt with a bunch of holes that he needs to be patched constantly. Well, last year, guess what? One city council got their pay, their street paid, and also all Montgomery Street right here got paid. Some of you take advantage of your place right there because you don't care about our city. When it's convenience about the keeping downtown safe and keeping the original way, yes, it is convenience. But how many years we've been there and you haven't fixed that street? You haven't done anything. I'd love for you to start dividing our community. We are one community and we should be one. Stop playing favorite. Stop self-serving yourself. And you can smile, don't worry. But Warshan was faded, Planesville was faded, somebody fix it right in front of that property so the water don't get in there. Fix everybody's. It's our city. We all living here and we all working here and we hard for it. You should have more respect for our business downtown. We are a small business and we should have the support, but what we have is nothing but crap.
Thank you very much. Your three minutes is up. Next up, Bill Clevinger. State your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Clevinger, 388 Berkeley Drive. I didn't prepare any remarks. Basically, just going to talk. Afra, two weeks ago, Mr. Porcald, you reported that you had not received any kind of information presented to P&amp;Z for the coffee trailer. I just wanted to put that on record and the fact that you actually drew that. And I traveled back from North Carolina to meet with you in person. We drew it in your office. Says coffee trailer in the whole nine yard. And it's supposed to be put in front of P&amp;Z that next week and then abruptly removed from their docket. So I shared that with the Jenkins and everybody, but you know, kind of disconvenient that it didn't make it there. But besides the point, somebody shared with me, they said I should just share our story about the ice cream. You know, we moved to Montgomery in 2012, came into City Limits in 2013. My wife, Paula, grew up on a dairy farm and just always remarked the fact that we couldn't get ice cream in and around Montgomery. Good homemade dairy ice cream. No offense to Blue Bell, but anyway, my wife and I, we run very, we run several different businesses, working extremely hard. The fact of the matter is, we have been criticized, we've been borderline terrified for the fact of our hard work. We've had drones flown over our house, we've had pictures taken inside of our house, we've had our privacy disrespected, we've been chastised. Remarks up and down one side, story made up that I bought a lot in town for 10 bucks. Please, by all means, line them up. I'd love to buy lots for 10 dollars. We've been labeled as squatters, that we don't pay our taxes, I mean, just on and on and on. And all we wanted to do was open up an ice cream stand on a piece of property that we invested 121,500 dollars for, paid in cash, wired to the settlement company. You ought to see the fact of how many people come from all around to sit there. Do they buy ice cream? Some do, some don't. Do they share coffee? Some do, some don't. Some just like the idea of the community. Couple last night, probably in their 70s. They come there three or four times a week from Willis. They have their son meet them there every Saturday from League City so they can share ice cream. There are so many more important issues going on today inside this community other than that ice cream stand. So yes, my time's up. I hear you, but come on, folks, we can do better than this.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda, item number one. I would relate to the approval of minutes of October 12th, 2021, regular meeting.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
One second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the minutes or the item as presented. This motion is debatable. Amendable or required majority vote? It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, item number one, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Consideration possible action, item number two. Consideration possible action regarding acceptance of the report and adoption of the strategic plan 2021 presented by Ron Cox Consulting. And council, you have received a packet in front of you. And Mr. Cox, if you would please just approach the podium so that our online audience can see you, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be back with you and to see all of you since we last met. And I appreciate, as always, the work that you all did. You've stepped out and taken the initiative to sit behind that dice and make decisions on behalf of this community and for that you should be applauded and applauded. We all have issues and challenges and perhaps working through some of these that are identified in the strategic plan will help in the long run for your community. So thank you very much. Also, I want to thank the staff for their work, Richard and all of the staff worked well with me before our staff, our council planning session, during the council planning session and after that, and they've done great work. And I think you'll be impressed with the product that they've provided. So on September 11th, we gathered to talk about council governance, that is, the process of working together, and then to do a planning session. And we used a strategy called a SWOT analysis, which is identifying our strengths, our weaknesses. Out of those weaknesses, what opportunities do we have? And then what are the threats that might keep us from doing the thing, the things that we need to do? And then we identified out of all that initiatives and strategies. It was a busy day and an enjoyable day, and I appreciated being there to help work through it. Overall, we started this process in August. We had our governance session in September, our planning session as well. And then I came back twice to meet with the staff, once on September 28th and again on October 12th. And now we have our final report. So just a brief discussion about the governance and what you all decided at that point. You recall this cartoon, and the objective is to be on the right-hand side of this cartoon, and that is to build a corral that's predictable and consistent, that you can follow, that staff can follow, knowing that that corral will need mending, will need changing, and things do change. But you did a great job in the beginning at least to build that corral. So we talked about governance in terms of four different legs of the stool, if you will, chair, effective leadership, meaningful communication, understanding roles and fulfilling expectations, and then proactive visioning and planning. We started this process, I'm not going to go through every one of these bullets because you've seen those, but we started this process in discussion with each other, asking why you ran for this position and then what attributes you bring individually. And each of you had your own reasons for running and you stated those, and then you talked about your attributes, all with the idea that individually we come from our own circles, our own areas of influence, and we get behind the dice. But once we get behind the dice, we have to work with a larger group and the things that we might want to do individually sometimes are affected by the way the rest of the group might think about it. And so the dynamic of how you work together then defines your governance model. And how well you lead and how will you lead, these are the descriptions that you gave in your, in our session about how you will lead, not only individually but collectively as a group. And you can see those items, and there's a second slide on that discussion about how you will lead. We also talked about communication, how will you communicate? And it's sometimes more difficult in an environment that's as structured as we have at the City Council meeting to have good dialogue, but that's where you're, that's where you're supposed to have it. And so you have to use your time wisely, you have to be informed, you have to be prepared, you have to do those kinds of things to be able to communicate well with each other. And then we talked about expectations. We talked a lot about expectations of each other and out of that came two different initiatives, actually. First one, to review and revise the rules of procedure that you've had in place for some time, but actively take a look at those again. And then secondly, look at, in a very large perspective, look at the regulatory ordinances that you have as a group and begin to look at those things as a package as opposed to one at a time, to see how they relate to each other, to see whether or not they're up to date and what the current environment has in front of you and whether or not those ordinances are lacking. So those expectations also translated into goals as we work through them. You also talked about your expectations of the staff, to be consistent and fair, to be professional, to communicate with integrity and consistency. And so they know now what your stated expectations are. And so they will be working toward making sure that they meet those expectations for you. So leadership, communication, expectations, and visioning and planning. And so we talked a little bit about what are the key elements of your vision for this community. I think I promised that we wouldn't hold hands in San Antonio, so we didn't quite get that far. But we did talk about what we see for, or what we would like to see for Montgomery when it grows up. Now, for a city that's been here since 1837, you might say it's grown up, but I would suggest that it's probably not ever going to be grown up. But what do you strive for? What's that ultimate goal? And so these were your primary list of vision elements, that people are your priority, the infrastructure serves our lifestyle, and not said in that is you got to have good infrastructure in order to serve that lifestyle. We will review those goals and grow and change and progress to meet the needs of the majority. Families are important, a close community, we have Texas pride. Leadership should be transparent and accessible, not should be, but is in that vision. And the city honors the historical significance of this community. And so that's the vision. So then how do we do that? What is the city's mission then? Susan, there we go. We didn't talk about this a lot, but to me, this sort of embodies the mission of a community, and that is to improve the quality of life for the citizens. And that's what a city is about, to do things, to have projects, to set goals that improve the quality of life for the community. And so with that in mind, with our governance model built and with our vision and mission discussed, then we move into that planning session. And I might point out, just for the sake of the folks in the audience, that the governance discussion was among council members themselves, but then when the planning session started, we had a combined group and a very active group of council and staff together. We did the SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And then in the planning process, the ultimate, the ultimate objective of that is to establish initiatives, goals and objectives, action steps, timelines, identify partners, and then have a staff take a leadership role in the implementation process. And identify areas of emphasis so that they can kind of be not only prioritized but identified more easily. And so I want to refer you to the paper, Staff Implementation Plan, that you saw, that you see in front of you. Each of the vision elements, or what we call on slide, areas of emphasis. If you'll back up one, Susan, it'll show how this all fits together, that what we call areas of emphasis. You all identified four different areas of emphasis and identified initiatives and in some cases, objectives or goals and objectives underneath those. Those areas of emphasis are quality of life, communication, infrastructure, and organizational excellence. And so to show you how that all cascades down, you'll see on page one, the vision element number one is quality of life. It has a guiding principle to improve the city's perception and appeal, tell its story in a positive manner that improves the quality of life in the community. And then on the left-hand column, you have goals. There are actually, I believe, four, yes, four goals, one on the second page, but there are four goals that you all identified that day as we were working together. And then under those goals are specific objectives. Some of those objectives you all identified as well, and so I took the liberty to arrange them in an order that seemed logical. So you may see some of those things that were on the original, the original sheets that you worked on that day. But then we worked with the staff to create those action steps. So each of those action steps have been identified as ways to begin the implementation process for those goals that have been identified. And then you'll see there's a column for partners. They're not all quite completed, some are somewhere, I think. But the staff is identifying partners, those people, those people groups, organizations that they can work with to help them get a product back to you in terms of implementation of that goal. Could be TechDoc, could be HDAC, could be the county, could be the Chamber of Commerce, could be any, the Economic Development Corporation, could be any of those identified partners because we realized that we've got a limited staff and we have limited resources, so we identify and use everybody that we can to get a project going. And then they took on, they took responsibility for the particular goals as you look down through there. That's not to say that they complete everything within that package that they may be assigned to, but they're believed and they would get those partners, they would drive this process. And then when it comes to reporting time, they will report back to you their progress in that regard. So each of these areas of emphasis, quality of life, communication, infrastructure, and organizational excellence, have goals, objectives, action steps, partners, timelines, and lead appointments to them. And as you, as you take a look at those, know that the staff, they spent probably, we spent at least five hours together in those two sessions developing this action plan. And so I hope you appreciate the level of work and the level of detail that they place on this, knowing what we don't want to happen is that this and the report get put on a shelf and collect dust. And so when there's someone who has taken responsibility and then there is reporting back to the council, and the reporting will likely be on a quarterly to semi-annual basis as we go through this process, so that you'll see this back to you in the form of a report as opposed to just saying, okay, where are we on these goals? You'll know that you'll get regular reports on those. I'm not going to go through all of those, but just to say that you all did a great job of developing your governance model, identifying issues and challenges, where are those weaknesses, and then putting that on paper where it needs to be so that everyone can see them and you all can work toward them and have great accountability with regard to what you said. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And I look forward to the next time I can come and see all the progress that you've made.
Ron, I think that this exercise is worthwhile, and so thank you so much for doing that. I know it's been decades since we've done something like this, so it was definitely necessary. So thank you for your guidance and your help.
Thank you.
And this is a lot of good, rich information in here, so that allows us to have the framework to move forward, so thank you.
Right, you're welcome.
If I read this correctly, this is a two-part step, correct, Richard? One, we approve the report, and two, we need to decide on strategic plan?
Well, the first step, as you said, is to accept the report. It's not council to work this, Ron, to work, you're receiving the report and accept it from him. And then the next step, it was considered adoption of the strategic plan that was presented based on the work done through council and staff that we're talking about.
And we can accept those together or individually?
Sure.
I make a motion that we accept the report as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the report as presented. This motion is debatable. Amendable or required majority vote? It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept this report. Report as presented. Looking at strategic plan. Item number three on your agenda.
Back to two, strategic plan. Sorry. So I have a couple of concerns with the strategic plan, that there's a lot of empty spots that are to be determined. So like vision statement, and by approving a strategic plan that has a lot of to be determined, what does that mean to us? Is whoever is assigned this task just gets to fill it in and we're?
No, those areas that are of a strategic nature, the vision and the mission, you all just didn't get to that. So we'll make a commitment that the next time you come together, we'll make sure that you all do that. The action plan and the details associated with that will be a staff responsible.
Did Ron, when you said the next time they come together, you were talking about the next time everybody would do this with you?
Sure, or me or somebody like me. The next time you come together in a planning session, to give you some opportunity to, this gives you some, we just literally didn't get to get as far down into the details. But what I wanted to do was to identify those things that we didn't finish, and that way, when we come back a second time again in the future, then we'll work on those things to fill those in.
Well, then why don't we plan a second time with you? Why wait another 10 years?
Yes.
That would be good advice, that would be a thought.
I just have a problem accepting the strategic plan with a lot of blanks.
That's correct.
So that's my concern. I've got-
If some of the council would like to look into doing the next two conferences, say if we have the holidays coming up, you want to try to get this in, any-
By the end of January?
I'm sorry.
Maybe by the end of January, that gives us nearly 90 days to get, I don't know what your holiday schedule looks like.
End of January would be fine.
Okay. Does council think that that's a good timeframe?
I think that makes sense.
Let me start by communicating with Ron on some dates that Ron, get some relation from Ron and then certainly those of the council. If you can get those to me when I say you're to Ron, then I will give those to the council.
Sure. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to say that they were omitted from a, from a negative perspective, but it's just areas we didn't finish.
And then is this something that the council would like to just not take action on now, but wait until we complete that process?
Yes, please. Do you need a motion for that?
Sure, you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table this until the end of January.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we tabled the strategic plan 2021 till the end of January. This motion is debatable. Amendable or required majority vote? It's open for discussion. All those in favor of tabling the strategic plan 2021 until the end of January, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will table the strategic plan 2021 until the end of January. Item number three on your agenda. Consideration possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, providing a repealing clause and a Texas Up and Meetings Act clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
Okay, last month, it was discussed to have a budget amendment presented for the funds that were freed up by paying down the balance of the MDC loans early. Funds that were being used, pay down the MDC loan, they were not budgeted funds, they were used from the fund balance. When that one started, we were in a mid-year position. And so council elected to use what was, you could describe as the surplus funds, fund balance, to pay that down. That was continued, you know, in planning from the staff through the first three months of this year's budget. When the council elected to pay that down early, those funds came out of fund balance. Since they were not assigned funds, there are not funds, you know, just readily- Since they were not assigning funds, they were not funds, you know, just readily available to be moved. What I've done here is to try to give council two options. The way that fund balance grows is we have sales tax revenue use that were above projections. And so, either the city council could take no action, and then as those funds grow, go ahead and assign one, or to go ahead and amend the proportions of the budget that applied. I went and looked at, with the help of Anthony, at the sales tax revenues for the most recent three months, those were a different period than was used in planning the budget. And so, it already has indicated to me that those are continuing to be higher than were projected. I think we projected around a 15% increase, we rounded that number off a bit from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year, and I believe those numbers have become, I think there's in front of me, but they're pushing closer to 20% right now. And, and they're, they're seemingly on strong track. But in order to do that, the funds, you need to identify them as specific revenue, rather than a seasonal demand. That's what I described in number one there. The, that's the basics of how to do the category, the book that you attach, sheet, that is page 64, that is, the actual, that exact, actual circuit is how those would be moved within the budget. And Anthony Lasky is available, if the council would want to hear the full explanation of that.
I think just clarifying that it wasn't in the original budget, and that was where I was lost, because I thought it was included in this budget, was a good clarification for me. And I also know that on September the 14th, we voted and approved on item number nine to move all additional sales and use tax funds to capital improvement infrastructure. And so with that, whether you take it out of this budget or don't, it's going to go to capital improvement infrastructure, is basically what I'm understanding.
And I don't know if this is from, if I would have to refer back to them, if any 1% is correct, then, then yes, it would be a redundant step.
So, bottom line for me, and the difference between option one and two, we don't have any way of really knowing how much money we might be able to gain in this, whether we pay now, or whether we just accumulate over time, because we just don't have that.
Well, we paid it off early.
You have to, you have to look at the revenues, our, and see if they're left.
Okay.
But the motion on September 14th that I have pulled up says that we're presenting, that we're accepting this item as presented, that every, any overage is specifically set aside for capital improvement infrastructure, and Kevin seconded it, and this motion was specifically for consideration to adopt a sales tax, add velorum sales tax rate at .2588. So anything over and above that sales tax usage would go to capital improvement infrastructures as our vote on 9/14. You're looking at me strange.
I'm sorry, I don't exactly understand you there, and I saw you have a problem. The, I think we're, you're talking about the sales tax, but that item sounds like there's a property tax item, unless I missed...
Yes, you're correct, I'm sorry, it is property tax, it's the add velorum tax rate for maintenance and operations, I apologize, it's property tax. So that would, that brings a whole nother set of questions.
Yeah, because it's got the sales tax.
Because this is tied to sales tax, not to property tax.
They're mixed in there.
I'll go, I'll go back to the staff and review that portion of the minutes for September 14th, related to this specific item.
Yeah. I make a motion that we amend the agenda item as presented in line number, number one.
Okay.
I don't know how else to make sure that $180,000 gets set to...
Can you set that one?
I just make a motion that we accept line item number one from item number three.
And you're talking, just for the clarity, that you're talking about the, in the discussion of the agenda sheet.
Yeah.
Or opposed to item one.
I wasn't going to read six lines of the, I'm sorry, it's the amend the income category of sales tax from 2.2 million to 2.305576 for the sales tax, ILO, property tax from...
I, I think we've got it for the, for the record.
Right.
And I know what amount of what it is.
Counsel, there's a motion on the table?
I just made a motion that we take option one instead of two.
And then we'll discuss the ways to...
Option one gives us a guarantee that the $180,000 is going to get allocated for cap improvement infrastructure. At some point, we need to discuss any overage of sales and use tax to go to cap improvement infrastructure, because we haven't discussed that, but that's another topic for another day.
Yeah, it just seems like one, one or two would still get the funds, surplus funds. Either way, would get the surplus funds.
Taking no action's not going to guarantee that your sales and use tax is not going to go to, to cap improvement infrastructure.
I definitely want to...
Does that make sense?
Is that true? I mean, I want to guarantee that, that's what, that was our intent.
If we take no action, and that extra income that we saved came out of sales tax and not out of property tax, then that sales and use tax is not reserved for cap improvement infrastructure, correct?
That's correct, but council could always visit and have the future.
Right, that's...
We're trying to make the future now, I guess.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure it's guaranteed.
Honey, is this, is this, is this a question for council? Do you want to make this decision now?
I made a motion now.
Or do you want to make the, you know, and you're, you're planning on the money coming in designated, or do you want to wait for the money to come in and then designate it later? So it's just, it's a, it's a matter of time, and that's up to council's request.
But you do have updated, more updated data to execute option one now than what you had before.
Right, and, yeah, it's like, I, I always try to be on the conservative side of this thing, making those projections, you know? And so, and because we have three months more of data that's above that line, I'm that much more comfortable to say that money, you know, while not there now, because we're talking about future money, that money will be there within that timeline.
Okay, well, I'll second the motion.
It is moved in second that we accept the, versus recommendation. On this item, that motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the recommendation number one as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will adopt item number one as presented on this ordinance. Number four on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding ending of one year warranty period and release of maintenance bond for the shops at Montgomery Retail Center Waterline Project.
And we have an engineer here for this item, as the mayor said, it's a one-year warranty period, and we're going to make this bond for the shops at Montgomery Retail Center.
Thanks, so just as a reminder, whenever public infrastructure is put in, the developer would have the maintenance bond with the city, because the acceptance of that project covers a one-year warranty period. When we get to that one-year period, we do an inspection, developer results for anything that comes up, any issues, if they don't, that's when we have that maintenance bond for. So this was a relatively small project, so this goes between Starbucks and the retail center piece. The reason for this, as Dave showed on the exhibit, is it will extend ultimately the future back to Buffalo Springs to serve rear pad sites for this development, and also create a loop. So on October 13th, we had a one-year warranty, no issues were found, so our recommendation is to go ahead and end it. It just, again, since it's been a while since we talked about this, what we do during that one year, we'll go, we operate on valves, in this case, operate the valves online, make sure they don't get closed as they should, make sure that the coatings are a heighter, the paint is still in good shape, and then that, nothing else, the valves themselves are able to be found. So with this project, relatively simple versus a neighborhood we're looking at.
Well, I make the motion officially end the one-year warranty period and release the maintenance bond for the shops at Montgomery Retail Center Waterline Project.
Second. It is moved in second that we accept the one-year warranty period, we end the one-year warranty period and release of maintenance bond for the shops at Montgomery Retail Center Waterline Project. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it is open for discussion. All those in favor of ending the one-year warranty period and release of maintenance bond for the shops at Montgomery Retail Center Waterline Project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ending of one-year warranty period and release of maintenance bond for the shops at Montgomery Retail Center Waterline Project. Next item of business on your agenda is item number five, consideration of possible action regarding presentation of utility and economic feasibility study for the Porter Farms Development, development number 2101. Chris?
All right. Again, we'll go through this item, so just as a reminder, back in, I guess, about 45 days ago, developers came and requested feasibility studies. So this, item five and six are both of those feasibility studies that were authorized at that time. The first one is for Porter Farms Development, which is 1097 and 149, and the second one will be Hills of Town Creek, section five, which is obviously next to the Hills of Town Creek. There are obviously a lot of similarities, since both of these feasibility's are at the same time. So we'll go through this one in more detail, and then Hills of Town Creek, I'll point out the differences in that one. So, going through your packet, we'll start with the summary on page 70 of your packet, and this is just general information on the site and kind of what we'll cover throughout. So, site is 26 acres in total, partly within the city limits, partly out, so there will be annexation required. About, of that 26, about four acres would require annexation to the city. The part that's already in the city is already zoned residential, and this is proposed to be residential, so there's no rezoning required currently. So they have 98 lots on this site. Their land plan is changing, so we did receive a revised one late on Friday, so we're down to 91 lots, but that's going to be a kind of a moving target until we actually get to the clarity plan, plan stage of this development. Capacities I'll talk about, because we know that, you know, we're running close on capacities, and due to that time, we'll talk about that for a while, so I'll talk about those here as I go through the report. You see an estimated kind of summary of their costs, which we'll go through, there's lift station improvements, impact fees that are listed, and then, based on their full development, so these 98 lots at a $225 valuation, $225,000 valuation, roughly $22 million development, which are generating approximately $84,000 in added more tax for the city. Look, flipping over to page 71 of your packet, most of the things that I said before, note that they are requesting, are looking at 50-foot wide lots, so there would be a variance for lot size. We actually list those variances down at the bottom of the sheet. So, based on their current land plan, we're looking at 50, a lot width variance, a lot depth variance, and a lot area variance. And as you remember, this is developer came and presented a couple of options, do we want to go for a larger lot, higher dollar homes versus more of a entry-level home price? Kind of the directive that he was given was trying to get more of that entry-level side, which is, was what we would expect, and then see these variances that came in. One other thing to note is you have your open space requirement. So in your ordinances, if your developer requesting to use less than the 9,000 square foot lot minimum, requires they provide a one-to-one compensated green space. So for every square foot less on lot, they provide an open area, green space, reserve, et cetera, to meet that. Again, the land plan's in flux, so it's going to be, you know, dependent. We also know this developer, as you mentioned, is probably going to be coming to the city for an agreement for development and/or some type of financing mechanism with the pit or something similar. So one thing that kind of we discussed with Dave, that, that might be an alternative if you can't provide that green space, is to look at sidewalks along 149, and getting over, cutting through to Homecoming Park and also just to the elementary school, because that would get, you know, around the school, get to the existing city park, and connect those residents through both sides. So, again, to be discussion, there's not a rule that says that, but...
Question? Would we, are you stating to the light, at 1097 and 149, and then that would be the crosswalk?
I think it would need to come down to the light, so come out, go down to the light, cross at the intersection.
And then you would have to go down 149 and around communities, or is that going to allow us to go through his property?
That's some of the discussion, and I know those properties, it looks like are currently for sale, so there may be an opportunity there to, to easement, to be able to connect the park, because that would definitely be the shortest route. If you cut across there, right at the school, I mean, that would drop you off right at the front door of the school and the park, that would be ideal scenario.
Could you remind me of the average cost of these homes?
225, I believe, is what he was...
And if, for whatever reason, the developer doesn't get their variances as they expect, how significantly will this change the estimated annual tax revenue?
Presumably so, because if he doesn't get, and the reason I say that, so his lot count's going to go down, obviously, but to, his lot price is going to go up, because he's not going to sell the 50-foot lot and say it's a 75-foot line. But I don't know what type of home product he would put, or what the development would look like. So yes, it would definitely change the valuation, the usage, everything else, if he doesn't have this variance.
One thing we should consider, if I'm not mistaken, these starter homes, the smaller lots, and given the variances and stuff like that, there's peripheral benefits, such as sidewalks, such as the developer paying for the water. So adjacent and future developments can, can see that as a plus to build adjacent to these structures, right? So there's that peripheral, we shouldn't get so hung up on lot size versus tax dollars and not see the other benefits that this brings.
Correct, yeah, this kind of opens up an area in the city that doesn't have, you know, there's not any new residential development in this area of the city. You want until you get over to Menelago and Waterstone and things like that, and then also, as he discussed when he presented to council, you know, looking at the option of extending it further north. And so that's one thing that, if you looked at exhibit B, which is page 78 of your report, that's his land plan, it's rough, so again, it's changed since then, but allowing for additional stub street headed north, again, this was subject to change, but...
Oh, on that, Chris, you got, is two interests off of 149?
Correct, so they're proposing two interests off of 149, and in this land plan, they had a second interest going down Thomas Street, which I know is a private street.
To be close to that hill?
Correct. So if you look...
They're going to have to really watch that, you know, a lot of traffic coming over that hill, coming out, that's an accident waiting to happen there.
Pollen.
Correct. So yes, there's, there's a lot still to be worked out in that.
Well, that's...
Yeah, is that Thomas?
Has he, has he closed on this yet?
I'm not sure if he has.
And he wants to purchase other property around there, correct? Is that what I remember?
Correct, what he was intending to, when he was waiting for, are lots continuing north, not 149, not fronting on 149, but more, I forget the exact size, though I think it's probably at least close to double.
I'm curious if he'd go east and connect out to Buffalo Springs, is it Buffalo Springs? It is Buffalo Springs.
Right, into the Summit Business Park.
The shopping center, yeah, the business park.
There was, the issues with that were, there's a creek in between that's not shown, and then also just the access. But again, if he heads further north in some of those tracks, there's an opportunity there to get to Summit Park Drive, because originally, that limited land plan in Summit Park Page Two, had another tree come through us.
So if he were to want to go north, would he want us to annex that as well?
He, ultimately, yes.
So in keeping what, what TJ said in advance, if there's a concern with an access right there, and if that same builder wants to go north, can we on the front side discuss a safer option?
Yes, and stub streets, et cetera, so it makes it easier to extend north.
And I would advise to do that, because that is a problem there.
And so what's been done, so on his more recent land plan that we got Friday, which is not in your packet, he has removed that tree at Thomas. Now it's just two entrances on 149, but then, and then other developments would have been done, is they just leave a reserve, so they don't put the stub tree in, but they leave a reserve on the north side of the track. So if it does develop, they utilize that reserve, turn it into a public right-of-way and keep it going north, but not putting that deadened tree immediately, since there is no guarantee.
What they, Chris, when you, if you see the developer, you might mention to him, a lot of people were uneasy about, a lot of the surveyors just walking in the back of those people housed in the yard without a guy notifying them that they were going to be out there. And especially some of the senior citizens, they were concerned about that, because a lady called me wanting to know who is, who is that in her backyard?
And who's responsible for that? Is that the landowner?
It is. Landowner developer, I was, again, I don't know if the developer...
Yesterday, it might be yesterday or something, they, they were out there, and it made her uneasy.
Yeah, we'll definitely pass that on, yes, for sure. So moving back to page 72, this is focusing on the water side of things, and it goes through where you're at today, where you're going to be at after your completion of your improvements project, with this development, other developments, and how things build out. So as of today, you have a capacity roughly 516,000 gallons a day, and about 900 or so complete connections. When you complete your improvements project, this underway takes it up to about 2,500 connections, is based on TCP rules. Your current average daily flow, so over the past 12 months, what we've been averaging is 300... is 365,000. So we're in good shape there. But then as we develop, and we look at, on Exhibit C, you'll see a bunch of tables that we project out through now into 2025 year growth, and how each development's going to add. When you look at the defaults, so everything that has been started, all the lots that are there built out, we, we have committed, quote-unquote, 630,000 gallons a day, so that is over that $568,000, $568,000 gallon capacity. Now, the, the limiting factor of your plant is a bush pump. And so if you remember, this was bid with the water plant improvements project, and decided to wait based on timing and cost. In between now and then, in the next development that we're going to talk about, that bush pump capacity may be better served than a future water plant. So we didn't spend, you know, the $90,000 for this project, looking at another project to provide us that capacity on different side of town. So based on the numbers, you know, we don't expect until after 2025 that we're going to be exceeding the capacities we're in, where we have today. So we're good, you know, four years or so until that point, which gives us the time to get the facilities in place.
But isn't this developer looking to build out in the next two years?
That's exactly what I was about to say.
Okay.
So when you, that, that's with what we have today without this development.
Right.
So the next paragraph down is with this development, and also with the camera tract and with the Hills of Town Creek, Section 5. So everything that's currently in the works is included on the next line. So that gets us until, you know, 800 or so thousand gallons a day, which uses up, you know, 140% of the pumping capacity, 97% of your connection capacity, and will get us to around 2024 before that's out. That's everything moving forward at this speed, and they're saying that a pretty quick build. Again, we're looking at where this goes is a different step, but...
So Chris, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying at 2025 and then 2024, that's the load that we will have on our current infrastructure, so then when do we need to start getting ahead of that and providing another?
Right.
Yesterday.
Right. And so that's what we're also currently doing, is aside from the feasibilities, the updates and master plans are ongoing, and present that back to y'all, taking the projections for 2025, making them out further, so better see, because again, we don't want to just plan for a 2025 facility, we want to plan for 35, 45.
2050.
And not necessarily build it all the day, but have it set up, so as we build it, we can tack on and tack on and tack on, and it makes it more efficient. So we'll be presenting that here in the next few months to y'all.
More efficient on the taxpayer, more efficient on the city, more efficient for the developers?
All the above. So I mean, it's, it's setting it up, so we're having the capacity that we need for what we have and what we foresee coming, but utilizing the impact fees that we're collecting for new development and timing out, because, you know, we can go build a facility that's going to handle, you know, everything that could ever happen in the city, but our revenues that are going to pay for those with impact fees, which are development-driven, aren't coming to those developments.
And we don't want to settle on futures.
It's getting far enough ahead to have the capacity for development to continue, but not so far ahead that, you know, things are sitting unused, or that big capital expenditure that isn't getting paid back from it.
Or if we had a 2008 and everything comes to a suspension halt, and then we are sitting on expensive capital improvement that's collecting debt, essentially.
As you said, what, four acres was in the city limit?
Four acres is 4,000.
How?
22 is in...
Just a northern strip. So if you look at page 77 of your report...
This city strip.
Okay.
So the strip that's in tan is in the city, and the strip that, inside the red box that's not tan.
No, no, city limits.
City limits makes a weird little dog leg right there, too, so...
It does. As far as actual water to the site, so there's an existing six-inch line on 149 that is not large enough to serve this development. So our recommendation is to upsize that up to the city limit line, again, to expand for future development up north.
Curious, what, how old is that line today?
So the 12, that six-inch, I do not know. It, it's one of the older lines, because the 12-inch, just to the south of that, would replace, or put in the past 10, 15 years, but that six-inch, that's, that's, I don't have an exact age on it.
So it's archaic, so it's probably...
Right. We don't have very good records on, record drawings of things like that for those facilities, but...
And an eight-inch would serve the 98 homes, but would it serve future development if he decides to buy out other?
So our recommendation, take the 12-inch along 149 and then loop an eight through the development to serve the 98.
Yeah.
If in discussion, then it says, yes, it's definitely going forward, we'll have to look at resizing that, or if it has access further up 149 or to Summit Park Drive, connect it in there as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see that one.
So if it comes out Summit Park Drive, you can connect there. If it goes closer to 149, now we have a 12-inch that can continue up.
Would that 8-inch also serve the fire?
Correct. Correct. All right. Moving over to sewer capacity, so page 73, very similar story. So currently, as you all know, we have the two wastewater plants. One is currently in use, one is decommissioned, but we're keeping the permit up, because it's easier to renew and modify your permit than try to obtain a new one. So your permit capacity for the action plant is 400,000 gallons a day, and right now, we're averaging about 180, 183,000 gallons a day. When you look at again, so the next paragraph is talking about, without these new developments, what has been going, what has, what has been committed, that everything builds out, we're looking at 427,000 gallons a day is our 107%. We then look at this track, adding to it, we're at about 572,000 gallons a day, adding this track, camera, Hills of Town Creek, Section 5, kind of grouping all those together.
Yeah.
And again, the timeline of all that, and so just as a reminder, your requirements for your permit, so you have a 75% rule, so after three consecutive months of hitting 75%, you have to be initiating, entering a financial plan. So that's 300,000 gallons a day. Today, we're at 183, so we're still half-space, and that's been relatively consistent, but again, the amount of growth is coming.
Yeah.
It's here. Also, one thing to note, in our projections, we're, when we look at what we're projected today, we're projected to 23, just based on our connections, so we're, we're operating under that. So we have a little bit of a buffer on what we're projecting versus what our actual flows are, which is good, we want to have a buffer, but still doesn't change, you know, expansions need.
That's like tomorrow.
So timing of all this, including these developments, we're looking at around 2024 that we hit the 90% number, so we need to be in construction of a facility. So the timing of that, to design and build a new plant, that's something that really needs to get started, that process next year.
So 2024, 90%, is there a way, just bad scenario, that we can hit that in 2023?
You know, we have pretty aggressive projections from these developers, you know, especially when we're considering, you know, some of the larger developments that take time to get completed. There's always a way, you know, if someone came in tomorrow and said, you know, "I want to build a water volume facility," and "We're going to use all your water," we'll build it next month. Obviously, it's a different situation. So there, there's always a way that it could, but based on the projections that we have do show, we have a little bit...
So you're confident that we're three, two years from...
Two and a half.
Well, it's almost end of 2021, and this is 2024, so two years.
I know.
And there's, you know, as we get... Right. As we get to these points, there's options to look at, you know, if we need a more short-term, look at leasing and package plans delivered outside, provide treatment while we're building the long-term facility. There's ways that, you know, if things go faster than is predicted, that there's kind of short-term fixes to use.
There is, okay. But the short-term fixes, if we're fire and band-aiding, can cost you a lot more money in the end.
Exactly. That's why we want to try to get ahead of it versus not. And so everything that, you know, y'all have been talking about with setting aside extra funds and the capital plan, now that, you know, impact fees have been in place, and developments are now catching up, that are now paying those impact fees, so with Hills of Town Creek and things like that, that new revenue that's slated for those projects is, is getting generated with those, this development occurs. And some of the things, so not to go too much off on a tangent, but it's an important topic. So, for example, the camera tract, you know, one thing that we discussed with them is either the option of the timing of their payment of impact fees, because what the rules say is this type of connection, and looking at the timing of that to help advance fund some things, to be able to get the ball rolling, because if we wait until they're connecting, obviously, we're out of time. Cool. Relating to sewer, you know, how they would connect, the closest line is obviously on 149, but that track from a property standpoint is higher than 149, and it falls off toward, as you go back to the east. We do not want another lift station in the public, so our recommendation to the developer is to obtain an easement, to take it down to 1097 by gravity, to connect to that existing 12-inch line there, and then it goes on to lift station nine and 10 at the bridge, and then back around. So a little bit more pipe, but it's still cheaper than installing a new lift station and maintaining a lift station. When they do that, lift station number 10 will have exceeded its capacity when we add all that in, so that would be, that would be on the developer to fund those improvements. We have a rough cost in here, and, you know, what needs to be done is, there's been a handful of other developments in this area that have had discussions about moving forward and looking, kind of regroup with all of them to see, instead of, you know, spending to take it to 500 GPM today, if the next couple of tracks we're going to move further is going to take it to 700, find some cost-sharing agreement between the developers to, to get
So will the developer have an option if they don't want to run the extra pipe and pay for the lift station to run up to 1097, to 149 instead of 1097?
The only thing they could do is to put in their own private, no, not just their private, to put in their own lift station that the city would have to agree to, accept, and then maintain going forward.
Okay.
Which, you know, we're trying to reduce the number of lift stations that we have, and if there's an option to, to not do that, we're going to push as hard as we can to do so. All right. Moving on to drainage, again, this one is, they have to do a drainage study to, you know, provide attention on site and follow the required rules and regulations.
Chris, I've got a question, real question.
Yes.
So where this sits, is this going to impact Town Creek and Andrews significantly with all the concrete coming, which is already questionably taxed?
Correct. So it'll be that little tributary that runs right behind some spaces parked.
Yeah.
And so it's going to be into that stream and then into Town Creek, and right there at the bridge. So now there's definitely, you know...
It's going to make those waterfront homes more waterfront.
Or slide in.
Yeah, to the water.
That, too. Okay.
And currently, what they're proposing is the tension on site to possibly submit...
So they are, so that's that, that's that water feature that I see in the...
Correct. Correct.
Or to the east.
Traffic and paving, we've talked about the entrances and exits.
Yep.
One other thing that we looked at was the most recent adopted thoroughfare plan by the county, and there's no proposed thoroughfare through the site. Development costs we discussed, water and wastewater impact fees totaling approximately $356,000. That's based on the table that's looked at in Exhibit E of your report, which is based on the number of size and meters, which is how that was calculated. And we've talked about the projected tax revenue of approximately $84,000 a year based on their current land plan and estimated prices.
Has the developer seen this feasibility plan, or he doesn't see it until after tonight?
He has seen it. It was provided to him on Friday, when we were having discussions about the revised land plan and things like that, so he has seen it. We haven't received feedback, but it is, he has had it since last week.
Thank you. For some reason, I thought his houses were lower-priced.
I think, well, my understanding of what he was saying is, 18 months ago, that house would have been obviously much lower priced, it would have been a sub $200,000 house, but how price increases that, that same product today is in that 225 range, I think is...
Because I was, I was shocked when I saw the 225.
Yeah.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I zoomed, or I was on the meeting.
Right.
And I was pretty sure he had a price less.
That is, so, you know, how...
Under 200, for sure.
Right.
Originally, he came in saying 150, 175, but then two weeks or a month later, when he came back the second time, he had said that, based upon inflation cost of lumber and materials, that they were going to start at 225, so...
And again, you know, hopefully things change, even though he'll come back, but what, what we do is, we have him provide us, you know, he submits to us what are your prices, what are your lots, so we're going off him, providing, instead of trying to percolate a value.
Was 225 entry-level these days?
Yes.
It is, isn't it?
Isn't that what Hills of Town Creek is going for?
That's pretty close to the Hills of Town Creek.
So for a 12, 14-inch square foot house, 225?
Okay.
Yeah, you're looking at me like I'm crazy, I'm dead serious.
You can go to Jim's Hardware and price the lumber down there, Carol will tell you for sure.
They don't sell lumber anymore, Jim's.
Yeah, we do.
Are they still selling lumber?
Yes.
Oh, I thought they were, because of McCoys. That's what I get.
We tried to stop, but it didn't work.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's all I have for this feasibility. So the action tonight, what it does is you're accepting the study.
Yeah.
You're not agreeing to development, you're not agreeing to the land plan, all that comes back, and especially with this development, preliminary discussions were some type of pin or other mechanisms that we'll have to come back in front of council before any of that moves forward.
I make a motion that we accept Agenda Item 5 as presented.
A second.
Yes, and then a second, that we accept Agenda Item Number 5 as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote, for discussion. All those in favor of accepting Agenda Item Number 5 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have the motion, here's, and we will accept Agenda Item Number 5 as presented. Item Number 6 on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding presentation of utility and economic feasibility study for Hills of Town Creek, Section 5, development, development number 2102.
I'll go through this one. So a lot of the same information, so what we did with the projections, we included both of these together and camera, so the numbers will be the same, but we'll go through the nuances of this track, again, stopping if you have a question. If you look in your packets, I'm on page 87, just the overall summary. This is about 16, a half-acre tract, we're looking at 72 single-family homes, a total cost between SPRO and impact fees of approximately $30,000 or $10,000, it doesn't assume any of their onsite improvements, and a projected taxable, taxable revenue of about $68,000 across that site. This is based on a $250,000 home price, $250,000 of the 72 lots. Moving over to page 88, again, this is being proposed as 50-foot lots, so there will need a variance for lot width, lot depth, because they do have a few that are proposed at less than 120, and the minimum square foot size of the lot, so same exact ones as the last. The, the track is currently zoned B, so if you look at Exhibit A, you'll see the zoning. It is all zoned commercial, that entire area is going to need to be rezoned to residential.
So he has some of the same lot size that are the other, same as the other neighborhoods, too, so it's not a...
Yes.
Thank you.
And are you ready for more questions?
Right.
So I looked at this, and I thought, I was concerned that there's no secondary entrance or exit to this loop of homes. Is there a future plan for an exit to run down that stadium road, that, that altar?
So that's one of the things, if you look at Exhibit A, you'll see the thoroughfare plan on there, so the red dots that cross that side. So this is one of the things that we know in the study that needs to have a follow-up discussion with the city and the county, because this is on the county's thoroughfare plan that shows Emma's Way that goes through. Obviously, it doesn't lie perfectly, because what this has done, it's at a thousandth level in Emma's Way, and obviously, it doesn't curve that direction, but just based on what was done. And then they have this secondary road that cuts kind of east to west to connect Emma's Way and then run behind the, MISD property and the stadium. So that's one thing that needs to be discussed to figure out the actual need and use, you So that's one thing that needs to be discussed to figure out the actual need and use, you know, my main concern with it is as it gets further to the east, where it's projected to connect to 149 is right on the sewer plant and right in the creek when this was drawn. And so where this actually fits to, to know the need, you know, the value of this, to be...
So that little cutoff there from Emma's Way going east to the parking lot, I walk that area all the time. I look at it, but I've never been down that stretch. But it does look like, as you say, it probably will connect, or if it's not already connected. So obvious concerns about game night and channeling traffic back through. Is that something we can cover later and go ahead and allow for it?
It is. So I mean, you know, the two-fold, if I follow your question, so you know, if it connects now, all the game night traffic could be coming through the middle of the neighborhood into Emma's Way versus going out to Lone Star Parkway. So you know, that's, that's why there needs to be follow-up discussion with, it's on the county's thoroughfare plans, we need to have the county involved as well with the city to...
It could be an easy fix, right, chief? I mean, you just close that off, because right now they're throwing them out to Lone Star.
And then my other thought was if we're gonna put that 70, 70, I forgot what number you said.
72.
Two more homes there, and we're gonna create an exit onto Lone Star Parkway, then are we looking at text dot to do a traffic signal evaluation for Lone Star Parkway and 105? Because that is a nightmare of an intersection.
Right. We have not had that discussion. So that's definitely something that needs to be...
Chris, is this part of Lone Star Parkway, this curve, is that outside the city?
It is. So your city limit is on the inside, what, for this exhibit, the inside or the southern portion of the right way, eastern portion of the right way. So this is not, that portion of Lone Star Parkway is not within the city limits.
And the only way that we would be able to annex it is if anyone develops on the west side, or try to ask for us to take them in?
So, you know, if you remember, we annexed 105, just the 105 right way. We could do the same thing here, instead of working to text out that, we're working to the county, because it's county right away.
Or if we wanted to do a CCN for all the water on that side and then annex it?
Right.
A CCN on that side for all the water and annex it? Just say that would be, that would be ideal.
No, for sure. And just, again, it's not shown up here, but one thing to remember is the first 300 feet of Lone Star Parkway is what, back in 2009, 2007, I think it was, the agreement adopted, the first 300 feet can be served by the city, and the back portion will be served by DOD. Again, continual discussions on that, but...
I think when we were there last, they were interested in speaking about it, and the CCN is potentially a mechanism we can use.
But you said the red on here on this image is the county? That's the county?
That was the city slash counties, the current county thoroughfare plan.
I know. Well, sorry, it's not on the diagram as far as what the red dots are.
Right, it is.
On the legend, I mean.
It is. So, you know, where that came from, so this is from the original 2010, I think it was, thoroughfare plan that the county did, when the city did their own thoroughfare in conjunction with the precincts, they included that on there. And at that time, Emma's Way did, it stopped at the...
And lord knows when this will be actually taking place.
Right.
Because my understanding is they've just updated their thoroughfare plan, and there's not a whole lot of intent to come up here and build this up. There's other focus?
Right.
According to...
Okay, you know, the thoroughfare plan are gone on 10,050.
Till we get 16,000 cars through this one intersection, potential intersection.
Dave, not that this is a priority at this moment, but is there any way to, for you to send out the new updated county thoroughfare plan to all of us?
Yeah, yeah, that's easy enough.
And you can give them, I'm just looking.
No, but I always have to dig for it. I feel like it's not readily available. I'll look for it first.
It's not easiest to find, but...
It's not, it's...
Well, Dave, I know what you mean. All right, going through the water, again, very similar situation to what we had before in terms of capacities. As far as where and how it would be served, we have two recommendations. One, they take the 12-inch line along Emma's Way and continue it on, and they connect Emma's Way so we can serve future Lone Star Parkway. As well as take through the middle of the neighborhood, additional 12-inch line that connects our water plant foresight, our future water plant foresight, to Lone Star Parkway. What that does is it reduces the length that we have to run to close that northern loop by a thousand or so feet. And also, just, we then don't have that extra line to deal with, because it would only provide one use, would be to transfer water. This would have a dual use, providing service as well as transmitting water.
Are we still considering a tower?
Correct. This is the site that it would be. And, you know, the difference between, again, this one and Porter Farms is always, same with the camera track, the Red Bird Meadows, is location. So, you know, Porter Farms is directly across the street from the water plant site. This is a long distance from the water plant site. So, you know, having done the improvements, so when you look at your master plan, you know, having done the first couple of improvements on the list, which were the water line, West Buffalo Springs Bridge, which was not there, you know, five years ago, and then the downtown water line improvement, so you now have those big 12-inch lines that go around. Improve the pressure and the ability to provide flow to this side of town drastically.
So is this water tower iconic, the drum, or is it the three or four leg with the...
It's all, to me, there's lots of options. You know, the three or four leg, the one that looks like a golf ball of tea, the, you know, composite tanks that have the steel bowl top and the concrete panels around the side. It's all, you know, when we get to that point, you know, kind of cost type size was gonna be the best fit for that spot. Move over to the sewer side, again, same thing that we've talked about. This one does not have some effect, the capacities of all the lift stations that this goes to, and it doesn't, they're still have the capacity of all those down the line, so that was, that was good. Same thing as far as total capacity, same numbers as we did before. As far as how this track gets served, there's already an eight and sewer line on Emma's Way that they would extend and connect to, and serve this property. Same thing on drainage, so they need to do a drainage study to determine where the flow, one thing they do not account for a detention pond on their site. So if the drainage study shows that they need additional detention capacity to mitigate their flows, they'll have to accommodate that, expand that existing pond or do something to mitigate their runoff. Evening traffic, we've discussed, we discussed the thoroughfare plan coordinating with the county for those thoroughfares that cut across the site to look at the need and/or timing of those. On page 92, impact fees are listed, again, based on the 72 lots in your impact fee table, a total of approximately $260,000. Then their projected home sales price of 250 gets them an $18 million valuation, which generates approximately $68,000 and add more tax at full build-out, assuming they hit the values.
And the build-out plan for this section is how many years?
We had, I think they were starting... Had them starting delivering the first lots at the end of 2022, and then building out between there and 2025.
So still on track with our water need?
Correct. That's all I have.
And the developer has seen this plan also?
Yes. He was provided it. He asked the same, same questions about the thoroughfare and the water line. Because you do have a provision here of ordinance where the city requires an upsize of the line, but there's a cost sharing, because they only need it eight to serve. So we would pay the delta between the bid price for an eight inch and the 12-inch, just because they're not, they don't differ from the 12. It's the kind of overall, the region that benefits from the 12. That was his one question, and then also just the thoroughfare, and having followed conversation to figure out, is it needed, and what is the right way to account for it, if it is?
If he did a 12, would there be any kind of considerations that we could make or negotiations we could do with him for other things?
Make a motion that we accept agenda item number six as presented.
A second.
Yes, I move a second that we accept item number six as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting agenda item number six, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item six as presented. Number seven on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding correcting place numbers from recent planning and zoning commission reappointments.
Okay, that, when this was up for consideration on September 28th, and these members were reappointed, their place numbers were listed incorrectly. And so legally, we need to correct those items. They're listed correctly in the recommendation box there. Jeffrey Wiggel was listed at the top because he serves as chairman, and then that threw off the number. So, you know, so a pro-luicide will then partly correct those numbers with those persons.
I make a motion to approve the new numbers for the places on planning and zoning commission.
A second.
Yes, I move a second that we accept the numbering of the places for the P and Planning and Zoning Commission. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the place numbers for the recent Planning and Zoning Commission reappointments, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the place numbers for the recent Planning and Zoning Commission reappointments. Item number eight on your agenda, update on revisions of chapter 64 of the City Code of Ordinances, peddlers, solicitors, and vendors.
Okay, this is to get some further clarification from the city council regarding the local food unit regulations before finalizing with the draft ordinance. In addition to the local food unit revisions, staff is also reviewing amendments to streets and other festivals, as well as board listings that we're referencing.
Mayor Coss, good evening. I want to revisit just a couple of questions. I'm on page 104 over the packet. We'll come back to the question in a little bit, and we heard everything from two days, which again was my recommendation, staff's recommendation was to be consistent with the county. I like calling them calendar days. So that's what staff has recommended to you. We heard four days, six days, and then after the meeting, a suggestion from someone in the community to essentially have a thing called semi-permanent, which would take any mobility requirement out of it.
Dave, we asked you to, and I made a point about this last time, we asked, you're here to provide us with guidance. And your guidance and recommendation is two calendar days. I've also heard back from other business owners and staff too, it'd be too hard to go further than that, too hard to keep up with that. I mean, whose calendar? Do we make tickers? I don't know that the officers or the, I guess, coded enforcement officer would be the one? Will we find that person to enforce the code? And if you have multiple trailers in town, I mean, how would anybody keep up with that, multiple days, and so...
You know, to your point, when you get a long, you know, a long calendar, you know, period, if you say, you know, to use, you know, kind of the long end, to use the six days, well, effectively, you don't ever have to move, because anytime anybody comes out to ask, no, I was gone on Sunday, or I was gone on Saturday, or you worked on Thursday, because I wasn't here on Thursday. And again, two calendar days seems to be the key to me, to an effective, you know, everything else falls into place here, landing zone. You don't have an issue with landing zone when you're doing something on the side for two days. And I think for clarity, staying consistent with the county, the county didn't just come up with these rules. They, they, you know, put just as much thought as we did, you know, if not more, into, you know, why they feel like their 48-hour rule is the rule for somebody that's gonna be mobile. Again, I'm not saying you can't have a restaurant, or you can't have a food business if you don't food every 48 hours, it's just we call you a restaurant.
Well, I think too, when you have, when you're layered with multiple governments and guidelines at which you have to adhere to, we get into a position of, well, the county says two, but the city says four.
And does it, you know, to your, you know, to your point, to further that point, on the bathroom question, not to get off the mobility one. But if we say 400 feet, the county says 300 feet, there's, you know, again, to be compliant with the county, it would seem to me they've got to stick with 300, because once they go over 300, they're not in compliance with the county anymore. So even if we say 400, I guess I don't have, you know, full clarity about just, you know...
Does the county trump the city, and how does the county know what the city does, and it just gets, it can get clued in?
Unnecessarily confusing, and I, we have talked before about simplicity and consistency. And I think it would work also for future vendors in and out of the city, that they knew ahead of time what the deal was when they went from one city to the next. I think it helps them. But again, my big push is, as you stated, when you extend beyond the two days, you begin to start stretching there and even more, and you begin to cloud that idea of being too permanent. And, and that's been my biggest deal, shall not impede traffic, that general idea of the whole thing being a policy that's really sound in terms of not creating a long-term situation at all that allows patrons to occupy the same place as you're driving is going to take place. The clutter beside the point, it's really an issue of safety for me, so I support the consistency of the two days. And the enforcement, as I mentioned before, the enforcement of this, this policy that we set up is where you go in and you say, okay, what, what's the spirit of this person's intent on day number three? And if there's leniency, then we would do that with code enforcement, but make sure that you're, you're consistent with your policy. I think that covers us as a city also, in terms of being guilty of doing something that is not safe and is not sound, is not consistent. So I agree with the keeping the 300, I agree with the two days.
What I would like to bring back to council, again, are, without, without having just a little, you know, bit of clarity, again, on these, you know, a couple of questions, we'll be able to come back to you next time, with it. And I didn't want to put these guys under the gun either and force them to, you know, to rush through a review, because you want to do it one time and you want to do it right, but, so I'm getting a general sense that I don't, you know, need to poll each one of you, but for the ones that haven't weighed in on the mobility, on the timeframe, again, any direction you can provide would be very, very useful. And when staff comes back to try and bring you back in ordinance, that is what you want.
So if you said that 48 hours, they have to leave?
Right.
Well, what, when would they be able to come back?
You stay away for... So my, the way that I try to think of it is, the county has a 48-hour rule, but if we have a two calendar day...
Okay, if I have two, two days, so I can come back at 12 o'clock the next day?
You gotta have one calendar day in between it, otherwise you've been there for more than two days. So you gotta be gone for the day, so you're there for two, but you can't stay for anymore, two means you gotta be gone. You can come back two days after that.
That's how the county, that's the...
But again, the whole idea, I know it sounds crazy to some people, but we're trying to keep mobile, you know, the issue. We've got a way to open up a business in the city, but if someone came to Chris and the engineers and said, hey, guys, got a great idea for a restaurant, got these tables right out here, the parking lot's gonna be wonderful, they, they would probably have some concern. I mean, again, and that's where we get into using a mobile vendor permit that seemed, that was never designed to open a permanent business with, to find...
Excuse me, what's up, Andy, please? Thank you.
So that's our, you know, that is, is our recommendation to staff, just to have, you know, clarity on it. Again, there are all these for people to open up a permanent business, they do it, you know, every, you know, year, but our recommendation on how we treat a mobile vendor should go down to what the plan says, these are the rules to operate in this county as a mobile vendor. There's a lot of consistency in us saying, well, you know, we see that too, we understand how someone becoming our city owns an apartment business. So...
Can you clarify, you say the...
Wait a minute.
Door-to-door solicitation, what, what do you need there?
We, we've not touched on that much, but our, so our current door-to-door sales doesn't require much in the way, or, well, it doesn't require any background check. You have a license, your business name, and you can go around and, you know, go door-to-door, so...
So what happens when we see somebody with a badge? I mean, so if we had door-to-door solicitors, do they get a badge from the city so that we know that we've, they've checked in?
So right now, they, they do have a permit, and again, that's some of the things that we'd like to talk to y'all about, and whether you'd like to clarify.
Like Atlanta?
You should know as an example, they issue a badge, it's not even checking, Susan knows a lot about these things. You know, the meat with the issue of badge, let me know that, hey, you know, they had a background check, is it a full background check that the PD would do on, you know...
And the city's aware they're here.
Right, you know, you have to recourse, you know, now, and one thing to point out too, most of the newer neighborhoods, this won't affect because their deed restrictions don't allow door-to-door solicitation anyways.
That doesn't mean that didn't happen.
Very, very true, very, and, you know, I would think that there will be a learning process. You know, I don't see a lot of door-to-door solicitation here. I mean, again, I've been here for 16 years, I get some, but I don't get a lot.
With the movement coming in, this is something we want to get ahead of, Dave, and not...
Yeah, you know, with the way, you know, with the economic environment and, and the will of people out there to, to take advantage of other folks, you know... of people out there to take advantage of other folks, you know, you could certainly see how easy it would be to scheme, you know, a town. And if we don't have something in place to be able to go back and find out who these folks are and how they're walking around, and that way...
And you would include it in this particular deal, so, right?
Right. It's already included. We're just looking at adding...
As part of doing a business in here.
It's not a whole set, you know, revamp of it. It's just, you know, there are a couple few rules that we could add in there that would give our residents, you know, a lot more in the way of security and knowing that, you know, that the person walking up to the door, if they've got a badge on, they've been vetted by the city. The, of course, the extreme is to say we don't want any, you know, door-to-door solicitation.
I don't think we want to go that far. But I think it would be helpful for everybody, citizens and patrol and everyone else, to be aware that they have to have that badge on. We do that in schools to protect everybody. And so I think it would be a good idea to include that.
This on the day, would it be tied just to the historical condition? Or it's all over for...
For the vendors? It's all city watch. Everything with this one.
All city?
Yes, sir.
So if I was going to set up a hot dog dinner out in front of my yard, I'd have to move it every two days?
Yep.
If you can't move to get a mobile vendor permit.
Depending on what the commission orders.
Now, to answer your question there, if, you know, if you...
If it's private property, I still would have to move it every two days.
Well, now, you're a single-family residential, so I'd be talking to you about a couple of times.
300 percent.
So if you wanted to operate a business as a permanent business, then you could, you know, we've got a process that you can follow to open a business. But if you come in to say, I want to be a mobile vendor, but then it just turns out you're not mobile, that's the piece that we'd like to talk about.
If you had TJ's Hot Dog stand and that has a trailer or mobile unit.
And you pass by outside of my gate in the yard. Suppose I move it, I'm all willing, I just move it down to the other end. I'm moving it.
If you're on the same piece of property, we think you're there. And, I mean, again, is there a way that somebody can probably find a way to go along enough down there? I mean, you know, rules are kind of like locks, you know, they're just keeping, you know.
Obviously TJ is thinking about retirement, so please lock him out of any retirement dreams he has. With that said, let's don't arrest any Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts in the process.
So Dave, what prevents Mr. Clevenger from doing a special use permit, since under special use permit, we have an ice cream store listed as one of the caveats for special use?
My general thinking is, so, a special use permit, and the attorney will give me straight if I get off, you know, too far. So a special use permit is a zoning tool that's tied to land use. I mean, a mobile vendor permit, even if, so if it's an ice cream shop, it's the mobile vendor permit that the, I guess, that the S U P just doesn't ever connect with. They're not, they're...
They're incompatible.
So if I may interject a little bit, a special use permit is for a designated area, and that allows the use to come before council and gives council a latitude to make a discretionary call. In this case, the council believes that having a food truck in historic district goes against the comprehensive zoning ordinance, then council can by law say no, or they can say, yes, no problem. So a special use permit brings it before council. It doesn't, you know, if you go to the permitted use table, it tells you what you go where, residential, industrial. A special use permit brings it before council, and council can consider a number of factors. And that's block letter all straight out of the local government code. So council has that discretion.
Does it go to P and Z first, or is it go straight to...
It goes to P and Z, definitely.
So it has to go through...
P and Z makes the recommendation to council. It's all based on staff's recommendation.
So to further that point, on the very next page on 105, I talk about food truck parks. And that's where this discussion of special use permits comes in. So to, so if we, in the zoning cover there, to say, hey, you know, food truck parks in the historic district, that requires a special use permit. You know, to use another example, the GM's post-food truck park over here that's on 105. You know, do you guys feel like that would be a special use permit that you want to see? From staff perspective, I don't feel like it is. I feel like it's close enough to a restaurant that it's a food establishment, that it's fine in a commercial zone. You get to the historic district is where I think you've got something a little bit different, because again, the very nature of the historic district, there are, you know, much tighter law lines. You don't have the parcel sizes that you have in...
You yourself said that we're writing ordinances that are good for the entire city, and that zoning would take over for historic district. This isn't a conversation about zoning. This is just a conversation about ordinances. And that's for the whole city, correct?
I'm not sure I follow you there.
I'm not either.
If you say, oh, okay, no, I don't know what I'm asking.
So I guess, my understanding is that we're discussing writing an ordinance that affects the entire 4.7 square miles of Montgomery, the city limits of Montgomery.
Sure, Dave. And every ordinance that we write...
So the words historic district play no part in this ordinance whatsoever?
Not in your vendor ordinance, no. Zoning ordinance and historic district, those are over in chapter 98. They're always...
So if Mr. Clevenger wanted to apply for a special use permit, it would take him before P and Z and then before us, and he would have a final answer whether this ordinance regarding peddlers, solicitors, and vendors was in play or not. Would one supersede the other?
I think I clarified it for you. So he could not say, I want a special use permit because I don't want to follow the rules of your mobile vendor ordinance. You can't do that.
But he's following the rules of those right now, correct? He's in compliant, I mean, he's in compliance. We issued a permit?
He's got a permit, yes, ma'am.
But if he come in and add the new special use in that historic district, in order to operate the truck in that district, based on that use, he has to come before council to have S U P issued.
Right.
So they're kind of intertwined. We're talking about specifically to that district. I think Dave's talking about, if we amend chapter 98 table of special use table, or the table of permitted uses, and make it S U P requirement to be in that district for a mobile food vendor, then any mobile food vendor that wants to operate in that district, the historic district, they have to come before P and Z and council to be approved. So that's just specific. Chapter 98 is just specific to that historic district.
So tell me what the codes are for chapter 98, because you have R1, R2, which I assume are both residential. B is business. I D is...
Industrial.
I is...
Institutional.
And C C is...
City council.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I didn't find that at first, but you're the...
The ice cream store is permitted in a business district. So are you suggesting that we need to amend now, in addition to the solicitors, peddlers, vendors, mobile food truck, that we now need to amend special uses to include a historic district as well and peel that out separate from the business district? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think so. I confess to not quite making it to the point that we were going for, but no. I think if you want to open a food truck park in a historic district, I think you need to come get a special use permit. I think, and again, a food truck park is where you're going to go operate these food trucks that are going to aesthetically look like these little mobile food trucks, but they're just never going to move. And we're going to treat it like a development. When you bring in and you open up a restaurant that's in the same place all the time, you do things like, say, where's your parking? Where are your grease traps? Where are your utilities? Where are your rifles? What are you doing with drainage? But I think what we're in danger of kind of mashing together is the mobile food vendor permit and what your conduct is doesn't really, it's related to the zoning aspect of it, but it's, again, you're not going to use your zoning code to make exceptions out of your vendor ordinance.
So if, for whatever, I'm just throwing hypotheticals right now. If for whatever reason, he wrapped his ice cream trailer with a porch and a cover, and it became an ice cream store, are we in a totally different ball field? I mean, because it's not engineered?
Exactly. Would it be in the normal ball field of development? Now, you wouldn't build it on all this stuff beforehand. You'd have to come to the city, you'd have to say, these are my plans, and this is what I'm going to do, and it goes to the engineer.
Water sewer, all of them.
Right.
That's true.
Right, you know, in his case, he's in, you know, in historic district, if you go to the community, you know. So again, there's a development process. If you want to go set up shop somewhere permanently, please understand, we've had a process for years on how to do that. It's the normal development process. But if you try to find a loophole in an ordinance to say that you don't need to play by the same set of rules that everybody else does when they own a business, that doesn't seem like the spirit of the ordinance.
Listen, I'm just trying to find a median solution for a problem that's gotten out of hand, that we as a city can say, hey, we're investing in these people. And, I mean, whether we agree or disagree on anything Bill Clevenger, he has purchased land, he pays taxes, he is trying to run a business there. So he's spent lots of money on a trailer, on property, on all these things. And I don't know where the communication issue is, but two days, six days, 300 feet, 400 feet, special use permit, you're saying we've had a plan in place as a city that's as archaic and as old as the city is, but clearly we don't and we haven't, and I don't...
I disagree with you there. I think the issue that we've got here is we've got, this is the first time that we found someone, well, actually, the Pollo Local Taco place that was there for a while, they were the first ones. So this is the second one that we've had of a food vendor who wants a mobile food vendor permit that has no intention of all, or no intention at all of being mobile.
We had the snow cone trailer that was out on 105 for a long time.
Right.
I didn't even know that they had a permit for a mobile food vendor.
They did have a permit, yes.
So this isn't first. This is, you know, we're one, two, three, five in, in the last five years.
I've got three of those, but I'll give you two more. But so those three that we just talked about, right, you know, I mean, is, this isn't, you know, there's nothing new under the sun. But again, what we've got here is, in my opinion, we've got a situation where, do we want to let these mobile food vendor permits be used to open a permanent business in one place? It's, you know, if you do, then it's certainly within your, you know, purview to do that.
I just don't think we make an ordinance based on one business, just on one scenario.
No, the city has a way to do it.
I agree with that completely.
But you continue to talk about the one scenario, but not the whole entire town, and the ordinance of the whole entire town. And if somebody made an investment, certainly appreciate the investment. It may not have been the best investment, they may not have been a sound investment. Whatever your opinion is of it, it shouldn't matter at all. Whether you think it was the best investment in the world, it shouldn't matter, because at the end of the day, there's an ordinance that needs to be updated in the way that we are conducting business. And clearly, we have to look at it in wholly from boundary to boundary, and not just one specific. And that is where the discussion is, and not one specific.
My questions were revolving around special use permit, though, and that is the pull-out of this for that one specific. So that was my question, because it's specifically listed in here as an ice cream store. So I do agree that we should write the ordinance that's for the whole city. I disagree with the timing that this is being brought, and so I would rather see...
We would be better timing.
I would rather see, I would rather see a special use permit given, and he can succeed or fail on his own. And I would rather it be a year from now, because I would rather it be not this huge city controversial issue between you and him, and that would kind of suck in there.
There's nothing to me, there's nothing to that. So you can check yourself, Ms. Davis? I have no data. Again, I have nothing. What I want is a city that runs well, and everybody abides by the law.
I do too.
And the ordinances that are put forth. So if you want to go with that narrative, that is your decision, but I take this very offensively, and I don't appreciate it. And for the record, there is nothing valid to your statement.
I second that.
Do the historical condition, do they have that rule, the guideline that they go by?
Generally, the historic district guidelines all reference architecture. Again, in Latin, in historic district, we didn't contemplate, you know, food trailers, you know, being permanent fixtures, when we thought about it. Everything, and it's not just obviously, because the historic district is going to be about the architecture. That's what you're going to write about. That's what you're going to, you know, that's what you want to protect.
And so Dave, there's a reason you didn't do that, because nobody walks around saying, oh, my goodness, let's go to historic any town and look at all the wonderful food trucks that we grew up with. This is an updating of an ordinance to deal with an animal that presents itself. And that's all we're really trying to do, is update the ordinance.
Counsel, just real quick, the ordinance would be applicable to the entire city, but the special use permit with historic district, if it comes before council, keep in mind that council can impose whatever restrictions, not whatever, but reasonable restrictions on that special use. These rules are applicable to everyone in the city. But that special use permit, you adopt that ordinance, that special use permit ordinance, and you can restrict the hours, you can make further restrictions, that are reasonable. So it's different. You can make it, give it more latitude, or make it the hours from eight to 12, from 12 to 4, two days a week, three days a week. You're allowed that latitude, that's what a special use permit is. It's not just adopting a special use. You're allowed to incorporate reasonable, rationally-based restrictions with that special use.
But then what we're talking about here is a blanket, a foundation to build off of, correct?
Yes. If we come back to amend chapter 98, make it toward needing S U P to be in historic district, council can impose further restrictions or none at all. I mean, that's council's discussion.
And again, there's no zoning ordinance currently for the historic district that says that food trucks can or cannot be in that area, correct?
Right, you know, there's not.
There's just zoning for particular parcels of land.
That talks about the land use, but not necessarily the, you know, I...
It has residential, commercial, industrial, but there's not a historic. And that's, when I first started this process, I thought it's kind of what we were doing is, let's make it S U P for just the historic district. So it comes before council, council votes on whatever their pleasure may be. That's what council's for. But there is no historic district, so I think that's why. Well, there is, but not this specific use table, permitted use table.
So since this is about updating, I see, once again, that staying consistent with what is here with the county is the best starting place and the best place to go. With regards to the current probationary thing that's in place, one has till January, and the other has till, I think, December. Any grace that needs to be applied and that affects the current people, give the grace at the end. But they still need to come in and say, I need an extension. But I'm not for taking another six months or a year or kicking the can down the road. I think we have what we need to be consistent. I still reiterate, and again, it's about as clear as mud when I try to go back to 2019 and the whole process that went on. It's a parking lot, for crying out loud. It's half a parking lot, for crying out loud. And I got no possible innovation in me that ever sees where it would be a good idea to put anything up there that's permanent, for crying out loud. And for that matter, anywhere in that small four-block-by-three-block area. And so again, I've been consistent from the beginning. If there's compassion, stay with what you gave to begin with, because we kick this around till the cows come home. But in the end, they need to hold to what you temporarily gave until we can figure it out. In my mind, we figured it out. This is it. I like it just like it is.
Keep in mind, if this doesn't work, we can always bring before council, amend the hours or whatever.
I'm not worried about hours, what you said makes perfect sense. This is consistent with the county, and when we go to pull in arbitrary numbers out, it is just that. It's arbitrary. And then once you start down to arbitrary, what you do for one, you have to do it for another. And then all of a sudden, the mobile thing is completely gone, and you've got horror stories of cities who didn't get a hold of this, and they're setting up everywhere. And then they're staying, and then it's a problem of regulation, like you said. If we're going to enforce a code, let's get an enforceable code. Otherwise, the code's no good.
I feel like you've got a little more direction. Again, it, you know, it sounds like a...
Would you like to have a straw poll vote?
I'm okay on that, you know.
Make a motion?
Well, there's no motion to make, because this is not an action item.
It's not an action.
Well, you know, just one last reminder, you know, the draft ordinance that we'll be bringing to you at your next meeting can be amended. I should see that. Our goal is just to... I mean, our goal is just to get it down to as few changes, if any, as possible, but know that the, that the cake is in the oven, you know, at the next meeting, you've still got time to, to change some as you see fit. So, this gives me the certainty, at least that I need, again, to know that we're looking at something that's going to be reasonably close, make sure that we get all our checks done.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next on your agenda, Department of Labor reports. We'll start with number nine, City Administrative Report for September 2021. Dave, you're going to be giving this?
I sure will. Okay.
Yes. Well, I figured since you wrote it, you would want to...
Dave is giving you the report.
Yes, exactly.
A few items, it is, I told Susan yesterday that nobody wrecked the car. I didn't do anything really, it felt like while Richard was gone, just, you know, everybody did a spec hack of their job and I've got a whole lot of respect for having somebody that I can, you know, go to and say, help, what, you know, I need help. So, but a couple of big items off the report, some of these are from Richard's. Again, we're getting caution out of that, you know, last year's budget closed out, so as the finance office and Richard are talking, they're going to be closing that out, we'll all see that here in the next month or so. Our financial auditor, that is, again, that's open. We've got, at least our current auditor is going to submit, and hopefully we'll have a few more names to bring to you guys at the, yes, it's posted out on the 28th and then so, November 9th, we hope to see some names in front of y'all.
So, November 9th, is that the email that I saw today that it's moved to?
That was the downtown presentation. That's it. You guys are invited to a downtown presentation. It's the EDC's meeting, so let me clarify because I think I, I threw a few too many things up in there. What I meant to do was to invite the city council to the special meeting on Monday the first, that's next Monday, for the downtown design presentation. We're supposed to get that off on Thursday, but now, that meeting is on Monday, the first at 5:30 PM right here. And again, it's an EDC meeting, but please plan to attend if you can because, you know, seeing that downtown plan, we'll be bringing that to council, you know, for you guys to look at. We would love for the city to adopt that downtown plan because that's what, that's our wish again for grant funding and things like that. Uh, there's, you know, many other state, you know, programs, if you don't have a downtown plan in place, you don't get a grant. So, um, National Night Out, I love the chief touch on that, planning and zoning, we did not have any action items, but they got to hear the same presentation that Chris and Richard there, lend their expertise on it, but we talked about the same thing that y'all hear, the camera, the states, just a general overview of muds. And then the P M Z, they don't play a role in specifically the approval of mud or anything else, but they need to understand how to work because they're working hand in hand with y'all on these new developments and if they include the mud, it helps them know how it works. So, ME D C met, um, this past Monday.
Did they assign, I'm sorry, did they assign the, the commissioner or the, their roles?
They did not.
I'm sorry, that's P M Z, I apologize.
Right, right.
I was thinking P M Z.
Getting that P M Z, we canceled our meeting for this coming Tuesday because it's election Tuesday.
Okay.
We do have a couple of items that we need to get back to before December, so that'll be one of the items that we hit on is, you know, getting those new law enforcement.
Okay.
If anybody feels like you want to do it in the summer with P M Z. So, again, I touched on the downtown management plan, it's not on Thursday now, it is Monday the first. Um, we had a good meeting this month with Tech Stop, or I'm sorry, not with Tech Stop, with Precinct One over there. And we're working with Tech Stop, trying to get answers out of them, not to steal the engineers' thunder and all that and do that, but it's tough to get answers from Tech Stop on what exactly they think about the light at 1097 Buffalo Springs, but we have had some good discussion on the other Buffalo Springs driver, I guess the middle, there at Lone Stock Parkway, trying to get a solution there to get that even the traffic. Um, I think we're all good on mobile food vendors. And again, we had to answer any of y'all's questions.
On, on National Night Out, uh, I have my son, he, he came, but he was out swinging because he said, nobody said anything while he was having National Night Out. He said, we just came to, just to eat, for what? And, and a lot of the kids didn't know, so I, I told him back in 1980, back Philadelphia and all this kind of stuff, but he said, somebody should have been telling the crowd why decide just of getting together and eating and leaving.
So, we get some of the story, Dave, we forget Chief's...
Chief's got it going.
Sounds like you just volunteered for something.
No, no, I, I kind of told, I kind of told him about the history of it, how it originated, you know, and, uh, look, look it up for yourself too and, uh, but he had a point, though.
You know, you bring up a really good one, because a lot of things that, you know, we feel like, hey, you know, we know about, but it's very good to remind us, you know, not only ourselves but the next generation.
No, I didn't volunteer, no.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right. Next up, the 10th Public Works Report for September 2021. Mike Muckler.
Mayor, counsel, how are y'all?
Well, thank you.
Uh, we're making it short. Do you have my report in front of you? Do you have any questions directly related to the report?
Was there a water leak at Memory Park?
No, not last month.
Sorry, I noticed on page 119 that the usage is considerably higher, but I know that's a little further down, sorry.
No, it's not. It's, it's normal for...
This time of year? Okay.
We're still at our original here.
One thing I can add on that relative to the month that has passed, I think we had two days of rain, I think it was the first day and the last day of the, and when I say month, I tie it up to the month of the water return, usually from 17th to 17th, the remaining days in between were dries, it was a very dry.
Gotcha.
We, we'll maintain the water level as part of this down.
Who mows the front of Hills of Town Creek? Is that a developer, development property in the front of Hills of Town Creek?
Yes.
Because they mow once a year, I think.
Yeah. Some of the same property under the digital...
Okay.
Mike, there's been several times that we've had, uh, feedback in the, um, in the beginning, people's talking about the Cedar Bay Park and the condition of equipment. Are we experiencing a higher volume of equipment issues than in the past or maybe are they talking about the same thing, same issues or...
I don't think we're experiencing a higher, higher rate negative. Because it might say something at the beginning.
Not, not this, not this meeting, but past meetings, I think, like three of them, uh, three in the past couple of months has, has stated that there's been equipment malfunctions and, um, hardware missing. So, I just didn't know if we were experiencing a higher volume or are you finding that, or maybe there's one incident that's just been mentioned several times, I don't know.
I'm, so I...
I was trying to understand.
Yeah, I don't know how many times it's been brought up. I know whenever someone brought up the, uh, the corners, somebody brought up some sharp corners that they found.
Yeah.
We went out and addressed all that.
Yeah.
Somebody had addressed the chains.
Yes.
And we went and addressed that. But other than that, I don't remember how many more there were. Uh, I'm not, not counting them anyway. But no, we're not having anything out of the normal, it's just, I mean, the equipment gets a year older every year, so...
I'd like to commend your team too. I think Charlie Dix did a great job of cleaning up after the fall festival and then, um, they left everything in the trash cans that were in the receptacles for your guys, but did a great job of removing them on Monday morning, so thank you for that.
Well, hey, like that's my, my clap case, when they did their work on the wall, I did, the city hung door hangers on the doors.
Yes.
Did?
The contractor.
Yes. Because there's some business owners that had them on their doors and then there's others that said they didn't have any.
I know, that night, someone told me they had them and others said they didn't have any.
It was a letter, basically.
Yes.
When the door hanger, it was on, on their mailboxes, if they could get it on the mailbox or they would just lay it by your front door. Or some of them I saw where they tried to put it through the door handles, but it was an average sized piece of paper like this.
Okay.
And then they brought it into gyms and then it, you know, got on my desk twice.
Yeah, I know the type of stuff, when you can make contacts, they do, you know, they throw one home and they'll leave what we call a door opener.
Right, right.
Whether it was a physical door or not, I don't know.
Well, it'd be better to, we make sure that they have tape on it and they tape it on the door of the business instead of sticking it into a door because I understand that could get lost easily between wind.
Yes.
If you've got customers and all of that, that may be a place where...
One of the things that we...
It's unsightly, so they have to remove it to...
Well, one of the tricks that we have done in the past is just fold a piece of paper and staple it to a true door hanger so that it will...
Okay. And you've never had any issues at that point with people not knowing that the water was going to be turned off?
Usually not, but I mean, you can still get the occasional personal incident that you proceed to notice.
And it was, it was turned off 15 minutes, is that how long?
Uh, when they called, it was a little after seven and I came up and, and...
We were all...
Lot of commotion out there.
Yes.
And, uh, so we just took it and went in and got the guy, they, they went and turned it back on and we apologized to them and told them we did better.
Did your phone ring? It was National Night Out, I knew you were...
Yeah, that night.
Okay. Okay, just making sure that you were present.
So, everybody was kind of upset around...
Well, right, I mean, there was a little mishap on it, they turned it off doing a test a little early and they, they shouldn't have, uh, that was definitely on them. But my understanding is when they turned it off later that night, then they made, that was the last time and it was completed.
Now, because I said, well, maybe we should, we, I told, maybe we should have done it Monday night, Monday, nobody, most of the restaurants closed or they decided, we decided to do it at 11 and after everybody was gone, you know, they had already left in because I had some people drive up from, uh, Harsh Park, they came up and stopped on the corner. I said, I understand, I understand.
It's usually 10 o'clock after.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's what...
It was like trash or something. And so, you know, in, in that kind of situation, I tell them, I don't take it personal, I understand and just, you know, let it go.
Yeah, that is during prime time for dinner. So, maybe in the future, if things, if we...
I thought I was having...
Letter says 10 o'clock, let's make sure we do it at 10 o'clock and not during...
Yeah, well, that was definitely, I mean, that was definitely on the contractor for turning it off early. We tried to try as quick as we could.
So, does it have a course?
Did they have a blueprint of, of old water now?
There, some of it, there's, I mean, none of it is getting messed. I mean, with everything that's being done, we're, we're vouching, being added and we know what controls what now, but there's some of the older stuff there because these are not...
He didn't know, he said, I think it's the water valve down Carolina, somewhere on the right, down there.
Well, but what we do all those is that either the day of or a couple of days before, my guys will go out with them in the field and they can turn off valves for them and see what does what so they already know before. And so, I'm not sure where the confusion was, honestly don't know why they were having to do that test to see if it was shut down when it was already done before.
And not one of your guys not with them though when they...
No, sir, not at all. No, we go out before him and, and if they ever call us and need assistance, we'll go out, but most of those guys are perfectly capable of, you know, handling that. It just, you don't know what valve controls what, it's sometimes terrible.
I don't know, he told you, he was really upset, uh, the contractor guy too, you know, because they had jumped on him.
Usually whatever.
Well, it's not good at the prime time, I certainly understand that.
So, we tried to come in and quieten it out, you know, smooth it out. We tried to follow it as quick as possible and I knew that you were, knew that you'd have been over there and you would talk to somebody. And by the time I made another phone call, it was already...
Yeah, it was all right, so then we went back around and made sure all of the water was on and shook hands and went left.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, man.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Chief Solomon with the Police Department report, number 11 on your agenda.
Evening, counsel, mayor. Do you have, uh, do you have my report? Do you have any questions on that? Got a couple of things I'd like to mention. If there are any questions on the report, we'll get to the National Night Out then. And, uh, yeah, you're, you absolutely right, councilman, uh, you know, by the time everybody got there and sat down, we should have talked about National Night Out and what it's about and, uh, we'll have something spectacular for you next year.
Slide show.
Uh, the, uh, we, we were talking about the fall festival. Uh, I was here, uh, most of the day for that fall festival until, I guess, around 9:30 or so. Uh, looks like we got maybe a little bit more than 10,000 people, that's a lot of people. I know someone had asked, they said, well, when these guys are doing these events, they're a little extra, a little extreme. I think you have to be a little extra and a little extreme. Uh, my, uh, my training has always been doing these things by incident command and we'll continue to do that as long as, as long as I'm here, we'll continue to do it by incident command. And that means putting down the right amount of security that we need for a place. When we had the, uh, when we had the festival over in the field, I think, uh, we returned about seven kids to their parents because they got lost. Uh, the other night with more than 10,000 people, we didn't have to return any kids to their parents because we took, we took the extra precaution to have, have that area where police were there and we had people in those areas that were monitoring those people, along with our V I Ps. Our V I Ps, uh, are really doing a really good job with us and, uh, they helped us out that night. We had the two different shifts of it. And so, when somebody talks about extreme, when it comes to security, I'm going to be extreme. Uh, you guys don't know much about my background and, I've, I've secured steps for, uh, stadiums for President Bush. Uh, I've done, I've done many rallies for Ku Klak Klan. I've, I've put together rallies for Ku Klak Klan. I've done this stuff for years. So, if anybody knows how to do it, I know how to do it. And so, we're going to continue to do that as long as I'm here. So, it's just going to be extreme, it's extreme, I'm sorry.
Rather safe than sorry. It was great.
Uh, oh, obviously, we came to you guys a few months ago, we talked about, uh, we talked about a grant, you guys approved the grant, we're getting grant for a de-escalating simulator. Uh, we were approved that grant 100% and the cash is on its way, so...
All right. Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Any other questions? That's all I have.
I did have one. Uh, and the V I Ps also helped out with National Night Out.
Yes.
And they did a great job too and they helped, they actually were the ones that really cleaned up afterwards too.
They want to be at, uh, all of these events now and so, uh, and that, and that will only grow as, as, as we continue with the, with the CPA classes, with the City of the Police Academy classes, that will only continue to grow because we'll get our group from those, uh, those classes.
When is the next class?
The next class won't be until April, start up around April.
And do people sign up now?
Uh, no, we won't put it out until probably a little bit before, probably put it out around June, and start getting people to sign up.
Well, Chief was out on Saturday at the Vision of the Past and he got a chance to see the traffic on that 1097.
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, we were, that, that 1097, I agree, it needs to come down to about 40 because what they do is, uh, I, I had a chance to look at it from the other end there and what they're doing, as soon as they're coming off of 149, they see that 55 and people are trying their best to get up to it. And it's like, uh, and so as you get to the other end, matter of fact, myself, on my way to work about, last Tuesday, I stopped a gentleman that was coming in that way because he was, you know, I have a radar on my car, you know, I've been stopping cars on him, I think he was about 60, so I didn't give him a citation, but we did talk to him about, you know, running through that area at that speed.
When we do the past, we need to make sure that we tell everybody to cool down and come back around because it got congested with just only...
We've been on the count, Chris.
Once there's cars out there on 1097, it's almost impossible to down, though. Okay. Anybody else have any? Chief, thank you, chief. All right, number 12, Court Report, Kimberly Duckett.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You have the report in front of you. The revenue for September 2021 was $34,747.41. The overall fiscal year revenue was $409,608.88. Is there any question on the court report? Thank you.
Water Operations Report, Michael. Exit stage right. You can just walk through, just walk through some of the paperwork. 20 seconds or less, go.
All right, the September Operations Report, just to break over our district alert, we only had one power issue that was not related to a storm this month, so things are definitely clearing up. Other than that, we did have to replace a couple of check valves on station three across from the bus barn. The rest of the items are minor issues. Page three is the wastewater plant flow detail for the month of, between August and September is 5,345,000 gallons. Daily peak flow is September 14th with 285,000 gallons, and the daily average flow was 172,400 gallons. Page four, we have your effluent monitor report, all the samples we're in appliance for the month of September. Page seven is your water report, source total of 16,857,000 gallons, sold 16,674,000, I'm sorry, sold 16,97,000, per is to a 97% accountability. Bottom right, you see your total connection count at 1,050. And pages six and seven are supplemental charts with a 13-month history. We did complete the mail-in inspection review, so that's with the city and the engineer, so they're reviewing that now. But that's all I have for the report. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Real quick, Mike, I have a question for you, are you live? Okay. Financial report, sorry, Anthony Lasky. Oh, I did? Oh, utility report, oh, sorry. I have that written down. I'll come back. I have checked it off already. Thank you. I can appreciate you for the numbers.
Just a couple of things to highlight on your financial report. It is the end of the fiscal year, so we have got all your expenses, I'll go over here in just a moment. First page, I wanted to point out, and this is also going to be on page three of your report, I have labeled the tax pool account on your construction fund for the American Rescue Plan, so then that way, those funds are segregated out, whenever it comes time to use those, then they're there, and it's just strictly for those. So I did want to at least give you an update there. On page three, for your operating fund, you have six months' reserve in that fund. Page four, for your MEDC, you have just over two years' reserve, and for your utility fund, over one year's reserve. And then for your budget, page 11, sales tax numbers for September, you collected 273,783.75, in which 205,337.1 of it was in, was for your operating fund, the remainder of it being in your MEDC. We did receive 274,762.64 for the month of October, which will be distributed for the end of the fiscal year. As far as your revenues, you were at 5,9282.937, which is roughly 37% over revenues. And then for your expenditures, we had a total of 4,584.935, which was 17% over, so you were still roughly 20% over for your revenues for the fiscal year.
Is there any deadline or SLA I need to meet for expenditures for TML? I haven't done my expenses yet, I have like 30 days.
I believe it's January.
January, okay, I'll get it done.
And also, one other thing that I wanted to point out, and this will show in your next report, let it present on December 14, I did deposit the funds for the mobility investment and the infrastructure investment into separate tax pool accounts, so you will see that on the next report under the construction fund. And we'll keep on adding those as we go. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Will they be listed as tax pool, or will you list them as the ARPA and capital improvement infrastructure?
It'll be, well, they'll be on the fund as tax pool. What I've done is I've labeled them, and I can continue to label them so that that will show what they are.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We'll go back to number 13, the Utility Report.
All right, I need to look at the report and see over $22,500 for permits on the following page, it shows the permits that were issued. Most notable item on there is receipt of the franchise dispute from the city. They originally sent that to the wrong address, and the council agreed to check for us. They've assured us that they have that address correct, and we, not a big check to lose, the fact that it happened like that last year, but they have a different person now, so hopefully that's true, we can sustain here. And the city's largest charge, mainly, I was going to point out, we already discussed about.
Richard, what is the lion's share of the records request copy fees of 761? Copy fees for records of what?
The vast majority of that was the money received from Bill Plancher for his records requests.
Okay, so that's, okay.
And, sorry, we've sold a lot of flags. Is that for all new residents that are coming in? I know we give them when they do, but that's not a revenue.
That is a good amount there. Again, they're $5 a flag, if someone buys both American flags.
Just curious to buy all the flags.
$9 for the one up there, so that's quite a few. And it is something that we do in the office.
Yeah. And then I notice we have 22 accounts in arrears with 10 disconnections. Is there anything that, do we know anything about the disconnections? Is there any way that we as a city can help? Is it economic downturn for those people?
Well, you know, in that category, those are the 22 at the far right, those are ones that have been, that were disconnected, moved out, did not pay good on their bill, those are almost certain to be write-offs at the end of the year. When I say write-off, we do maintain the list, so if for some reason they go back to the city, we may be able to catch them there. That's probably unlikely to happen, but it's still a better chance than anything.
Correct.
We've looked into the past about the options of trying to go through collections route, those accounts just don't have enough money to back to be used.
Thanks.
So any other questions about the report? Sorry, I guess, follow up to your question there, though, when customers do have trouble paying their bill, we do work on the arrangements with them. We try to avoid disconnecting them where possible, we try to find a way we can work to them if we need to, to give them an extended timeline, but we have a written agreement that they have to maintain their side of the board.
Perfect. Thank you. Last but not least.
Yes, so we're starting at page 170, Duckett. Downtown water line replacement, all of those ties are complete, so we've shut off some things that we've talked about, all the work is done. We had final inspection on the 19th, and a punch list the contractor's currently working through, site cleanup, valve strength, and things like that. Water pipe number three improvements, that contractor should begin demolition any day now, so the whole tank has been drained and is opened up, so it's ready to start them up as we speak. The GLP projects are listed, they're still working through some of the scope issues on the Haters Ridge privates, we'll have more on that, just modifying the scope to fit within the budget allowed and some of the bottom little requirements of the grant. So I don't have any real updates to give you on that one, but that one's ongoing. 1097 speed study that we mentioned earlier, or that was mentioned earlier, that's still under text op review. 1097 above the previous track signal warrant analysis, we did receive a confirmation, or I didn't get confirmation, no, the text op saying that they agree with the analysis, that the track signal is warranted, they have moved it to a consultant for design. We followed up as far as the timeline, funding for that, so they're moving forward, but I don't know what time like that.
When you say funding, is that going to be on our backs, or text op going to jiffy sense, it's their recommendation?
My understanding is that, again, so we, our response to them, the whole message, again, kind of like I said, it's been a little bit, but it was a one line, it says, "We agree with the analysis, signal is warranted, we have proceeded or sent it to a consultant for design." That was kind of the extent. Our follow-up was, what is the timing? Do you have funding in place, you know, for design, construction, et cetera? We have not, obviously, had a subsequent response.
Do you think that there's a lack of, are we getting things in a timely manner from them, since there's been a change in the roster?
So far, I mean, I think, I know the area manager, I think, has a little bit more time while he's here, so we definitely have a follow-up conversation with him, and as he has his replacement identified, to keep that relationship up, because we have a good working relationship with him and all the text op related activities in the city. We're on page 171, the additional track signal warrant analysis we're reviewing, we'll have the results for you at your next meeting. Developments, we talked about the feasibility studies, nothing to hit on that. On the platform reviews, we did, since this report came out, received a minting plat for Hills of Town Creek, section four, and the only thing it is, is correcting some lot lines on the northern end of the property. So no, doesn't change a number of lots there, just clarification. One of your warranty inspections, one I want to touch on, Hills of Town Creek, section three, there's still continuing issues with those areas of holding water in the streets, so we're continuing to work with the developer on it between cul-de-sac, that doesn't drain, and then there's a quarter that also is just not draining as it should, so still working through those issues on those. Moving to Redbird Meadows, we are meeting with the developers engineer next week to discuss their updated phasing and timeline, to be able to tighten up our numbers and their numbers, and to talk about the capital purpose necessary to meet those timelines and how funding mechanism could work to meet that. The 2022 Clean Televising Project, just as a reminder, the plan was to bid that around December, and then have contracts first of the year, and start with construction around February timeframe, and that is still the case. Last page, 172, permit renewals ongoing, we'll get them submitted in the next few days. The application's complete, just going to file a review and getting staff sign up on it to submit. Turn lane, the latest updates, just sort of the same one we had before, was as of November, Intrigee is going to have the poles relocated, and then it's the four-month timeline from that for next year. And one thing I do not have on here that I just to mention, as part of the last legislative session, there was a Senate Bill 3 that was passed that regarding emergency preparedness, states that all kind of on the heels of the winter storm and these stuff. So one of the requirements is that all public water providers have to submit that their facilities to be critical loads, and so what that is, is we submit a letter to your retail provider, and your electric service provider, which in this case is both Intrigee, this part of Texas, to Office of Emergency Management, State Office of Emergency Management, and then also the PUC. So we've collected all the info, we're giving that submitted, that deadline is next week to get all that submitted to them. The second part of Senate Bill 3 is you have to prepare an emergency preparedness plan. It's a, it's a set form provided by the TCEQ that lays out your steps in all your facilities, and then what you do in the event of emergency, so we're also prepared that. The deadline for those is submitted by March 1st to the state, it gets reviewed, they'll provide comments or approval, and it gets implemented by July 1st, so in time for hurricanes season next year. Both of those are ongoing, just to keep you in compliance. That's all I have.
But if we get a winter storm in February.
All of those are on.
Right. I'll make a motion that we accept departmental reports as presented.
I second.
Let's move and second that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion's debatable, amenable, requires mandatory vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting departmental reports as presented, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the departmental reports as presented. There's nothing on executive session for this evening. Next up is Council Inquiry.
If there's anything there, I'd like to say something, because I know all of you are aware, I just came back from vacation, I'd like to express my thanks to my department heads and assistant city minister for the work done and applaud his colleagues. They did 100% of the work, I think, because he didn't, he gave us nice staff.
I saw they have a sleeping bag here.
There was no one who was more glad than I should have today, and he's going to thank me by starting vacation.
For 20 days. Was that, is there anything else? Did you have something here?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
My motion, will you adjourn?
Let's move, did you second it?
I will second.
I didn't even second it, I thought she did. That we adjourn this meeting, that motion's debatable, amenable, requires mandatory vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, it was 8:28, we will adjourn this meeting, come quickly.